Welcome you to this forum featuring the candidates who are running for Robinsdale City Council Ward 3 and 4. There's one seat open for election in each ward, so voters may vote for one candidate. My name is Kathy Hempkin. I'm the past president of the League of Women Voters of Crystal, New Hope, East Plymouth, and Robinsdale. And yes, we do have the longest name in the state. The League of Women Voters sponsors candidate forums to provide the public with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss the issues that are important to members of the public. The League of Women Voters is proud of its history of citizen education for our community and to help voters make informed decisions in local elections. The League is a nonpartisan organization that does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in each forum are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. Questions today should relate to the office of Robinsdale City Council. Questions for the candidates are from the audience here today and are from citizens who have emailed them to our League email address or left a message through the League voicemail. We do not accept verbal questions from the floor. All questioned writers are kept anonymous, and the questions become the property of the League. Wearing a face mask is a personal choice for each candidate or audience member. We wish to thank our moderator for this forum, Peggy Plum, a member of the League of Women Voters of Minnetoka, Eden Prairie, and Hopkins. Peggy?
Welcome to the forum for Robinsdale City Council Ward 3 and Ward 4. The two candidates for Ward 3 are, in alphabetical order, Mia Z. Parisian and David Robbins. The candidates for Ward 4 are Pat Bakken and Aaron Wagner. And Pat Bakken is absent today due to illness, so we'll just be hearing from candidate Wagner. We have asked the candidates for an opening statement telling you why each would like to serve and some qualifications and experiences each has for this position. Candidates, there's a timer who will notify you at 1 minute, 30 seconds, and stop intervals. You may finish your sentence after the stop sign. Ward 3 candidate Parisian, would you present your opening statement of up to 3 minutes now?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Mia Z. Parisian, and I am thrilled to be one of your city council candidates for Ward 3. I want to thank the Robinsdale Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters, as well as CCX Media for making this event accessible to our neighbors and friends. I've been fortunate to meet many of you out in the community. You are the most important part in this democratic process and for being present, asking thoughtful questions, and listening carefully to our responses in order to become a more informed voter. I let you know in the last forum a little bit about my family history and how we have deep roots here in Robinsdale. This has come up in surprising ways during knocking on doors, and it's amazing how quickly we can find a common thread in such a short period of time. So some of you may have gone to Robinsdale High School with my mom or aunts and uncles. Some of you may have gone to Cooper with me, or played hockey with my brother, graduated with my sister, or even taught my younger siblings in elementary school. My favorite surprise was actually meeting someone while knocking on doors. And, you know, we talked politics for a couple of minutes, but then after, we discovered that he was the guy who asked out my mom in high school, and she turned him down because she was going to be too busy washing her hair. She used to tell me that story growing up, and it was such a treat to hear that again on this campaign. My mom has since passed away, and now my husband and I live in the childhood home and continuing the legacy of that home. It has been absolutely wonderful to have connections with people and their stories woven into my campaign. So a little bit about me, I graduated from St. Olaf College. I lived abroad for a couple of years, teaching at Chiang Mai University. And as a former educator, I continued pursuing a career in serving people on their learning journeys. So I now design learning experiences for adults as an instructional designer in the tech industry. And I'm here running for office in Robinsdale for several reasons, all of which I believe are rooted in empathy and in supporting residents' happiness, safety, and growth. I'm a champion of inclusion, working to ensure all voices are heard in our policies and that our policies reflect the needs of our diverse population. I care about the environment, and I support green initiatives and infrastructure like the Blue Line, energy efficiency, educational programs, and alternative eco-conscious mobility within our city. I'm also running with representation in mind. It's about time our city council better represents its constituents, not only in demographics, but also in lived experience. And I'm proud to be the only woman on your city council ballot across three wards up for election this year. I say this is a source of pride, but it's also offering a source of motivation. I will work to make sure getting involved in local government is more accessible to young women and people beyond the binary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ward 3 candidate Robbins, would you present your opening statement of up to 3 minutes?
Yes. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is David Robbins, and I'd like to earn your support for City Council Ward 3. I can't predict the outcome of the November 8 election. I also can't predict the likelihood that Jeopardy will ever take an interest in me. So when I sat down about two weeks ago to write these words, I was determined to make the most of what could be my last opportunity on television. In the course of my research that day, September 24th, I came across an odd coincidence. Six years earlier to that very day began the demolition of Robinsdale's Terrace Theater. At that time, I was living and working in Caracas, Venezuela, where dictator Nicolas Maduro was intent on demolishing anything he didn't like either. Now, longtime residents will probably be thinking, what the heck is Dave Robbins doing by opening up that old wound? And here's why. My favorite moment while campaigning was meeting a neighbor who told me about her first visit to the terrace to watch Ramses and Moses battle it out in the Ten Commandments. She recalled how handsome Yul Brenner was, and she was grateful to have an intermission and return to that beautiful lobby for a much-needed cigarette. That's understandable. It was a long film. Is it any surprise, then, that back in 2016, there were so many people so upset to see the Terrace Theater torn down? It held memories. It was distinctly Robinsdale. Though long gone, the Terrace Theater debate is still alive and well. It's just taken a different form. It's no longer about tearing down. It's about building up. It's not about a movie theater. It's about a train. And just like a moving train is hard to stop, the Blue Line plan has also proven hard to stop. Many have tried. My problem is not with light rail. My problem is not with public transportation. My problem is with the Met Council's management of the light rail program. They've steamrolled local government. Their ridership research and projections are outdated and do not consider the advent of a telecommuting workforce. The people who will benefit the most are the wealthy real estate developers and people that can afford the luxury apartments that will be built in proximity. Their ability to predict costs is consistently inaccurate, with budget shortfall and hundreds of millions of dollars. These will have to be made up somewhere, taxpayers. I will not likely be able to stop this train, but here's a pledge I'll make. Whatever occurs as a result, I will work to improve Robinsdale's infrastructure and promote pedestrian and cyclist safety. I will work to limit business disruption as a result of the light rail and reduce any loss of commercial real estate that could have been used to grow our tax base if not for the construction of transit stations and parking lots. Last, I'll work with whoever, wherever, to promote the reform of the Met Council. Let's make this election about our vision for our city, one that isn't dictated to us by the Met Council. Let's protect what makes Robinsdale distinctive. Let's chat over a coffee or a beer and conceive of a vision for a Robinsdale of the future. Let's tackle the issue of racism and insularity made worse by the COVID pandemic and the social media echo chamber. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Ward 4 candidate Wagner, would you present your opening statement of up to 3 minutes?
Yeah, thank you so much. As mentioned, my name is Aaron Wagner, and I'm really excited to be here today, talking to all of you. And I just want to say thanks to CCX Media, League of Women Voters, the Robinsdale Chamber of Commerce, and Robinsdale City Hall for hosting this event. A little bit about me, I was born at North Memorial Hospital and grew up in the Anoka area. I bought my house about five years ago at the south end of town, and I've really enjoyed living here ever since. I'm into fitness and working out, so I like to utilize all the green spaces and natural areas around town. So I'm thrilled to have this opportunity to give back to a community that has given so much to me. I'm a union member. I'm active in the DFL, Twin Cities Democratic Socialists of America. I want to bring a new progressive and working-class vision to City Hall, and I want to do that by empowering working people and their families. That means I want to implement policies and programs that make Robinsdale a better place to work and to live. Some of those include expanding access to public transit. So I'm a big supporter of the Blue Line extension in its current form. A citywide $15 minimum wage and a sick and safe time ordinance will provide a much-needed financial cushion for the lowest-paid workers in our city. The number of people that are renting here increases every year, so we need to rethink how we can better protect those hard-working families so they don't have to face their landlord alone. At the end of the day, we are all neighbors, and I truly believe that this office belongs to all of us. If elected, I promise to remain open and accessible as your council member. Together, we can amplify voices that aren't often heard. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It is now a time for questions that are being asked by citizens, either those in attendance by phone or by email. We ask the candidates for 1-minute responses. Candidates will be called upon in a randomized order, and we will begin with candidate Wagner. So the first question will be, how does city government meet the needs of Robinsdale's diverse families, and what are your suggestions?
Yeah, so I think the way that city government can best address those needs are through programs that benefit working families. So I think when we think about programs like the light rail extension and the intersection of those when it comes to race and class and all those other things, that's one thing that I want to fight for, because having access to good public transit is beneficial to those communities. And working people need to have other forms of transportation to get around town and other things like that. Also, policies like increased minimum wage, sick and safe time ordinance, again, those benefit all working people, and, you know, priority communities need to be served by those programs as well.
Thank you. Next candidate Parisian.
Thank you. So certainly diverse families, I think, very carefully about how my campaign is focused on inclusion.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So I'm thinking carefully about how my campaign really focuses on inclusion and how we can serve diverse families. When I think about how Robinsdale, the city of Robinsdale, has recently acknowledged pride this past June, also recognizing Juneteenth, I think that's a great way to recognize our diverse families in some of those holidays that we want to see represented in our community. I would love to see that go further. Also, racial covenants is an issue currently at the desk of the city council. I absolutely support removing the racial covenants from the deeds that exist in Robinsdale today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate Robbins.
The one thing that we do have in common as residents of Robinsdale is really the need for all of us to make our ends meet. One thing that all of us can speak to is that this is a difficult financial and economic challenge for everybody. I firmly think that we're looking to serve the needs of diverse working families, that we really need to consider about how to control our costs and to make living in Robinsdale more affordable experience. One of the things I'll mention is that the city, and most people are there, this actually makes a money on a franchise fee for all of the utilities that are provided to our citizens. That money is substantial. That money can be used to go back to residents to make their lives more affordable. Oh, can I be heard? Is that right? So what I'm trying to say is, I think, in other words, we need to go ahead and address the fact that the city is not poor. The city can help our residents by giving back some of those monies in order to help people make their ends meet. It is frustrating when neighbors tell me that they're having difficulty paying their water bills. I think that should be addressed.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with candidate Robbins. Is Robinsdale a safe community? Do you have any ideas for improving this?
Robinsdale is, in my opinion, a safe community. I enjoy walking around the neighborhoods with my dog, enjoying our parks together. There are certainly safety issues that need to be considered, including pedestrian safety, cyclist safety, and things of this nature. But overall, I've been really impressed by the way our police and our public services look to maintain safety. I am a little concerned, for example, at the state of sidewalks, for example. I know that in our capital improvement plan, we've only budgeted $30,000 a year for the next 10 years in order to improve the condition of our sidewalks. I think that's incredibly underfunded, and so when we're talking about just pedestrian safety, I think that's something that's worth considering. Once again, we have the money. It is not time to claim poverty. We can do it.
Thank you. Next candidate Parisian.
Thank you. I understand from conversations with voters that many people are feeling less safe than before, and statistics and the research supports this feeling. So in the Twin Cities, for example, violent crime is up about 24% from last year. Some experts believe it's partly the result of the pandemic. Others say that it is a result of legal guns getting into the hands of the wrong people. There are some community-driven organizations that work to serve the community in a way that reimagines public safety. And I'll use Brooklyn Park and the nonprofit Minnesota Act Now as an example. So they have community-operated patrols, and they've seen a reduction in crime and praise from Brooklyn Park Police Department, as well as praise from the local businesses. So their city council in Brooklyn Park in January approved $1.2 million in funding to continue that program, and I think that's an example that we can look to here in Robinsdale. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Wagner.
Yeah, I think Robinsdale is generally a safe community. I know talking with, I mean, my perception of it, as living here for five years, it's I've never felt unsafe, talking to most of my neighbors while door-knocking. It's not an issue that they bring up immediately, although when they do bring it up, a lot of the concerns are around things like, you know, pedestrian safety, as well as keeping, you know, their kids safe as they're playing out in the neighborhood. So reducing speed limits throughout Robinsdale, I think, is a good first step, and I know that City Hall is working on measures to address those. I think we could have, like, those digital signs throughout the neighborhood that kind of alert drivers when they're driving too fast. I would like to see more of those throughout the city, just to really remind drivers that there are children present, that there are community members present, just to take it slow down. And also, you know, we need to have programs that can address the problems of crime. I think poverty can be one of those. I think having programs citywide, like I alluded to before, that really help address some of the material concerns that working families have will go a long way to addressing any sense of safety. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next question will be starting with candidate Parisian, and I'm going to give you 2 minutes because we're getting a couple of questions about this, and it's a lengthy one. So 2 minutes. The light rail, Blue Line is planned to run through Robinsdale. Please discuss what you like about the plan and what you would prefer changed.
This is a very important question. Thank you. So as I mentioned in my opening statement, I am in support of the light rail transit. I think that public transportation is one of the most important issues that the city council will see in the next coming years. The improvements to infrastructure development and the opportunity for residents and visitors to take advantage of affordable, environmentally-friendly public transportation options is an exciting project to be a part of. I am in support of the project, and I'll work with the other council members, commissions, the Met Council, and related stakeholders to ensure safety and mobility remain at the forefront of the project updates. Now, as part of my work on the city council, I'm sorry, as part of my work on the planning commission, as I look forward to hopefully serving you on the city council, I have seen some of the latest project plans zoomed in on Robinsdale. So there are a few concerns that I have about some of these upcoming project plans that are still in the works, and I think that just showcases how important it is to have a representative on your city council who really, truly understands Robinsdale. I do think that the light rail is going to ultimately bring a lot of positive impacts to our community, and this Blue Line extension is going to serve some of, it will serve everyone, including some of the most economically and racially diverse communities in the metro area. I would certainly support the forward momentum of this project, and I think it is absolutely important to get community input on some of these pieces of the design that we can influence. So there is an opportunity here to receive funding with very intentional plans for our, for this project design as it relates to us here in Robinsdale. Thank you.
Thank you. And next candidate Robbins, and again, to remind you, you have 2 minutes this time.
Thank you. The, I think my feelings about the Met Council are fairly well-known, but again, I want to make sure that people understand, I am in favor of green alternatives for transit, and I think the light rail is in fact a green alternative. I don't think it's the only green alternative, and I think we're being sold a bill of goods should people be led to believe that it is the only alternative. Things like arterial bus rapid transit has been consistently dismissed by the Met Council, and these can be an electrified bus system and also be an environmentally-friendly alternative. I don't like that the listening sessions offered by the Met Council have been, in my opinion, a very one-sided affair. I don't think they're giving people a real opportunity to express themselves about their opinions relative to the project. What I do like, and I'll jump back to that, is that there is an opportunity here, should the plan move forward, for our city to receive a substantial amount of funds that could be used to support our infrastructure, and I think that's excellent. But the question once again is, at what cost? We're going to go ahead and build a park-and-ride station. Well, we have such limited space. We're a fully developed community here in Robinsdale. I would hate to see our limited commercial space sacrificed to things like park-and-rides and stations for the light rail. That's an opportunity to grow our tax base. I think that would be really regrettable.
Thank you. And last candidate Wagner.
Yeah, thank you. This is a really important question, and I'm glad we're having a discussion about it. Some of the pros that I feel that really come with the Blue Line extension project, I mean, there's a whole host of them, but some of them I'll touch on now. The environmental considerations of having a greener form of transportation in our community and an option to get around town that's not, you know, burning more fossil fuels and, you know, having these, you know, polluting vehicles around town, I think just having that option to have that is really good. And I think when it comes to the environmental question as well, when it comes to, like, the stops and the stations that will be throughout town and the corridor during construction, you know, we can, as a city, ask for things to, you know, to greenify, if you will, Botino Boulevard, so we can have solar panels on the stations, we can have green space around the stops, as well as, you know, apart from light rail being a green form of transportation, you know, we can have biking infrastructure as part of the reconstruction of Botino, and we're not going to get any of those things if we don't ask for them. And so what I, my approach to light rail is really one of, let's work together with the Met Council as much as we can, and if, but instead of this current approach that I think the majority of the council has right now of, let's continue to fight and fight and fight instead of being a constructive partner. And if we're not going to be a constructive partner, we're not going to be able to ask for certain things that I just alluded to. So I don't want to miss out on that opportunity, because that tax money is going to be spent, so we should, we should want it to have that state and federal money be spent here in our community, not elsewhere. Kind of the only, one of the big cons, I think, of the project is just the length of completion. You know, I bought my house five years ago with the understanding that light rail would be coming to the neighborhood. It was a huge selling point for me, and it hasn't started yet. So that's my biggest concern, is like, let's just get it done.
Thank you. Moving on to a new question, we'll be starting with candidate Wagner. Please comment on the health of Robinsdale's business sector. What would you suggest for improvement? Candidate Wagner. And it's back to 1 minute.
Great, thank you. So again, I mean, I think the light rail is a great kind of vehicle, I mean, lack of a better term, for development inside of Robinsdale. If we can connect our community to the greater metro area and make it easier, we're going to drive people into our business district and patrons and new customers and things of that nature. So yeah, development projects like that are going to be huge. Expanding sidewalks and biking infrastructure, again, just make it easier to get around town, get it, make it easier to get to Robinsdale, and that therefore will make it easier to get to the great businesses we have in our town.
Thank you. Candidate Parisian.
Thank you. I was recently asked the question, what is a new business that you would add to Robinsdale? And I thought about it for a while, and this question was actually such a blessing, because as you think through all of the amenities that we currently have, it was quite challenging to think of something new. And that really speaks to the charm and what we have here right in Robinsdale. Since our city is fully developed, the majority of our land use is residential, and this naturally lends itself to supporting small businesses. So on city council, I would further support our existing and new businesses by advocating for anti-displacement efforts as they relate to the light rail transit. And I would also look to new redevelopment projects as an opportunity for mixed-use commercial and residential options. So a great community really thrives when we have great small businesses, and we have such a unique charm that we need to maintain here downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Robbins.
Yes, I think as far as our downtown is concerned, I really think that it's an impressive recovery. Anybody who has been a long-term resident of Robinsdale has seen downtown make an incredible rebound, which I think is a real credit to the city council of the past and certainly to Mayor Blonigan. I do want to mention that, that I did in fact receive that same question that Mia received from that particular concerned citizen, and I also thought about it. And I think, yes, we have a healthy downtown. Yes, we are fully developed. Yes, our space is limited. I personally would like to see, I think the health of our business community is, or can also be measured by the amount of underrepresented minorities that are in our business community. I would like to see more African-American-owned businesses in our downtown business district. I think that would be really, really important. And I would like to see jobs that are not necessarily service-oriented, but light industrial to further diversify our economic base. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to a new question, and we'll begin with candidate Robbins. And you probably know where this is coming from more than I do. The question is, is Robinsdale's housing stock in good condition?
Well, I am a new homeowner relatively here in Robinsdale, so is our housing stock in good condition? I think we need to consider when we're talking about housing stock that we're not eliminating people who are renting as well as owning. And I, while I think that Robinsdale does have a pretty good variety of quality housing, I think there are a number of properties particularly, but not exclusively rental properties that are not well-maintained. I think that includes not necessarily just freestanding individual homes, but furthermore apartments. So while we have a good quality housing options in Robinsdale, I think there's plenty of opportunity for those things to be improved and to make housing certainly more affordable in a genuine sense, not just in terms of our verbiage or nomenclature, truly affordable housing that is accessible for all people. And those would be things that I would certainly want to take a closer look at if I were on city council.
Thank you. Next candidate Parisian.
Thank you. So I believe our housing in Robinsdale has seen some really great improvements in the last couple of years, especially with some new high-density options. I think it's important for any housing market to have variety, where we have single-family homes, higher-density homes. And I also think that we do have a lot of affordable housing options here. To further ensure that affordable housing remains here in Robinsdale, I also think of renters. And I would consider looking to St. Paul as an example of how they have
And I would consider looking to St. Paul as an example of how they have put rent increase restrictions, so no more than 3% increase in a span of 12 months, and that is regardless of a change in tenants. So I think that's one way that we can really ensure we keep housing affordable. And then again, for future redevelopment projects, I think we need to ensure new redevelopment plans comply with affordable housing as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And last candidate, Wagner.
Yeah, thanks. I'm, a lot of my opinions and sentiments about this are, were echoed by the other two candidates just now. But yeah, again, I think it's doubling down on protections for renters. I think our, you know, in general, our housing stock seems pretty good to me. But again, the amount of people that need to, that are renting increases seemingly every year. So I would absolutely support rental increase caps as well and just making, you know, and again, let's put action to our words. If we want to make housing affordable in Robinsdale, we need to implement real protections for people, which includes those rental cap increases and also, you know, protections around how evictions can occur, and we need to revisit those. So yeah, I think just focusing on making Robinsdale livable for everybody, regardless if you're owning or renting, is a top priority for me.
Thank you. So for our next question, we'll start with candidate Wagner. And I'm out of questions supplied to me, so I'm going to give you one myself. And the question is, tell me about an issue that concerns citizens you've heard from in your campaign and what you'd like to do about it. And this should be an issue we haven't discussed so far in this debate.
It's a really good question. I think, you know, being open and accessible as a, as an elected official is something that I've heard when talking to neighbors. A lot of folks, you know, for various reasons, have never met their city councillor, didn't know there was election happening, and I really want to change that. I want to foster an environment through the, you know, if I'm lucky enough to get elected, you know, I really want to have the office be open for everybody. You know, we're all neighbors, the seat belongs to the community, and just amplifying voices that aren't, wouldn't otherwise be amplified in other means. So I guess that is one thing I've heard when talking to people, is this, their concern of, of a representation that's maybe out of touch or out of step with the current needs of the community. And just simple action of knocking on someone's door and having a conversation really goes a long way.
Thank you. And next candidate, Robbins.
Yeah, that, it's, that's a very interesting question. I, if I, I may be mistaken, but I think that nobody here up on this podium actually has children. But I will say that as a teacher, I have very strong opinions about this issue, as do many of the people I spoke with while out knocking on doors. And that is the quality of our schools. The, it is no secret that schools are having difficulty staffing these days. There's massive amounts of teacher turnover, class sizes are too large. I know for experience, from experience, that classrooms are often not safe. I think anybody in Robinsdale would have great reason to be concerned about the quality and safety of our schools. The parents I've talked to have echoed that, and we all know as concerned citizens that the quality of our schools is a reflection of the quality of life in our community overall. And it must be addressed, and we as a city council, as municipality, must do our part to, to demand better from, from 281. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Parisian.
In conversations with voters, I hear a lot of folks are so thrilled with how walkable and bikeable Robinsdale is. But there are some concerns and issues around pedestrian and cycling safety. I can absolutely empathize with that, and I'm imagining 36th, 36th and June is a particular thorn in my side. But in terms of pedestrian safety and thinking about how we can slow vehicles down, I would like to look to thoughtful redesign as the opportunity comes up for redeveloping some of our streets. And one of these designs is going to be implemented on Hubbard Avenue, where we have some speeding issues, and then this new redesign is going to take on a chicane technique with the potential of slowing, slowing drivers down and making our sidewalks more safe for our cyclists and pedestrians. Another opportunity is reduction of speed limits and safer crosswalks as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some more questions now. We'll start with candidate Parisian. Question is, how and why should Robinsdale work closely with Crystal, Golden Valley, New Hope, and Brooklyn Center?
I love this question. Thank you. I think this is so important, especially with how small Robinsdale is geographically. I think we're only about three square miles. So it's natural that we are sharing space with our, our neighboring cities. Just at the, the Chamber of Commerce meet and greet, you know, you sometimes assume that folks in, in our downtown space are all Robinsdale residents, and that's not the case. We enjoy each other's amenities very much. So I think it is key for us to keep in good contact with each other. I certainly look to our neighboring cities for ideas, you know, issues that they have going on right now and how we can address them here in Robinsdale as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And next candidate, Robbins.
The, yes, Robinsdale is a small city, and I do think it's important that we leverage those relationships with other, our neighboring municipalities in order to get more of what we want. And our issues are very much in common, things like crime. That is an issue, and we're seeing it everywhere. The, I do feel that when we're talking about common issues, I'd like to return back to the issue of our schools. I think it's really worth mentioning that we need to find ways creatively to leverage our collective strength as neighboring municipalities who participate in District 281 to demand better from our schools. As far as other issues, I think crime and schools really are among our best opportunities to coordinate with other municipalities to address common concerns and to improve our situation.
Thank you. And candidate Wagner.
Yeah, I like this question a lot. So I think working with other cities that are our neighbors, that can take various forms. I think, you know, having a, a culture on the council where we're participating in organizations like League of Minnesota Cities and other organizations that really bring together city leaders in a common area towards common goals is something that I look forward to doing if elected. Also, we can work with state leaders as well. I think when it comes to, you know, we had a yard waste pickup issue, we're still kind of in the middle of resolving that as a city. And, you know, we should talk with our neighbors, neighboring cities about what they did to, to resolve those problems or how they worked with trash collection agencies to kind of come to an agreement to, to get things back on track. And we can do that, you know, kind of ad hoc, or we can use, you know, state resources to, yeah, facilitate that conversation. I agree, school district shares its common across all our neighborhoods, and so we should work together to improve that as well, and also youth programs that we can kind of share amongst our communities.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll begin with candidate Wagner. Question is, should party politics play a role in city government? Please explain.
So the party politics are certainly more reserved for state and federal elections, although the people that are active in this community, a lot of them belong to various political parties and political organizations. You know, I haven't been shy about telling voters and people at the doors or even at this forum about my political affiliations and where I lean on that spectrum. So I think in that regard, it's important to me to be open and honest about it. But certainly when it comes to representing a community, my hope is to, well, the goal is to represent everybody and represent all working people. And again, going back to what I said before about making sure that this office is open and accessible to everyone, because we're all neighbors, that's something I'm really going to facilitate and foster. So again, there are people in the community that have political affiliations, and those have, those folks have every right to hear their voice heard as well as people that aren't affiliated.
Thank you. Next candidate, Parisian.
In having conversations with voters, I've been surprised to, to hear how often I get questions about partisanship or party affiliation or how I vote. So my first answer is always, this is a nonpartisan race. However, many folks are not always satisfied with that answer as they're getting to know their candidates. So I believe that candidates should adapt to the needs of their voters. And I have been very transparent in communicating my values and my promise to prioritize representation, inclusion, and the environment, and any issue that impacts humanity. Now, with that being said, my values and the values of the DFL overlap enough that they have offered me a letter of support for my campaign, and I was happy to accept. With that said, my aim to serve lies here in Robinsdale, and that has been clear well before I decided to run. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Robbins.
Yes, I feel pretty strongly that we have set a bad precedent, both here in our own city council, all right, and in our school board, to introduce politics and party politics and endorsements into any of these roles. I firmly do not understand how people can represent the full breadth of our political spectrum here in our city when they are being endorsed in any form by any party. I am proud to say I have voted for Republicans. I am proud to say I have voted for Democrats. And therefore, I am proud to say that I feel I am in the best position to look objectively at all issues, regardless of the political leanings or intentions of those particular issues. I absolutely reject party politics. They do not belong here, and they prevent us from getting things done.
Thank you. And this looks like our last question. We'll be starting with candidate Robbins, and it's a little complicated, so I'm going to summarize it. This person is concerned about rental management firms buying up housing, single-family homes. So the question is, is it possible to limit single-family home sales to a limited number of investor homeowners in neighborhoods? Candidate Robbins.
That, you know, that is a really interesting question. We have seen so much housing turnover here in Robinsdale, and whether you're a renter or an owner, you've seen the effects of that housing turnover. Should there be a limit? Well, you know, contrary to what I'm already hearing here in this particular forum, I do not like and do not believe in messing with market dynamics, right? Rent controls have proven consistently ineffective in places like New York City, where despite rent controls, for example, rents continue to rise at exorbitant rates. So messing with market dynamics and therefore limiting how many homes people can own, I'm not so sure that's the issue. I think the issue is, is we need consistent code enforcement that's going to hold people accountable, whether they own one rental property or a hundred rental properties. Everyone deserves a safe, comfortable, and desirable place to live. So rather than messing with market dynamics, I think what we need is consistent code enforcement. It's not a function of how many properties somebody owns. It's about being responsible to your tenants.
Thank you. Next candidate, Parisian.
Thank you. Could you repeat the question?
Sure. They're concerned about rental management companies owning single-family homes? And the question is, is it possible to limit single-family home sales to a limited number of investment homeowners in neighborhoods?
This is an interesting question, and, you know, I mentioned earlier that Robinsdale being fully developed since the mid-1970s, it, it has created our community to be so many of single-family homes. And in chatting with homeowners, you know, I've been asked, you know, are you a homeowner or are you a landlord? And I thought that was an interesting question to, you know, make a decision about who you're going to vote for. I think the concern here is holding our landlords that, you know, that are here in Robinsdale accountable. I think that that can happen through a number of different ways. I spoke earlier about rent caps at 3%. I think that is one way to make sure that we are protecting our renters, and then also protecting overall our single-family housing market here in Robinsdale. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Wagner.
Yeah, I don't know if there's specific ways that the city government can limit sale to developers, but I certainly would entertain any kind of, any of that. Like, we should absolutely explore anything that's really in front of us when it comes to addressing this, you know, national movement of buying up a bunch of single-family homes and renting them out to the very community that they just purchased them from. So I think there's a way to keep the develop, developers that are purchasing at local, things of that nature, instead of just having these, you know, invest, large investment firms that aren't even from our community buying up properties. And again, like I said, renting them back to us is, that's, that's not right. I don't know what kind of authority the city has to maintain, to manage that or regulate that, but I certainly think we should explore it. I think, yeah, again, rental protections for renters is super, super important. I think when we talk about where rent control or rent stabilization hasn't worked out, that's a failure of policy. It's not necessarily a failure of the, of the idea.
Thank you. So that's all the questions I have, so we'll move on to closing statements, and you have one minute. We'll begin with candidate Wagner.
Yeah, thanks so much again for hosting this, CCX Media, League of Women Voters, Robinsdale Chamber of Commerce, and Robinsdale City Hall. It was great to, to come out here again and, and get to know people and have you get to know me a little bit better and the candidates here. It's very important that we stay engaged politically, and local politics are oftentimes overlooked. So this is an incredibly important event, and I'm, I'm super happy to participate. I would encourage in the future that this, this forum be hosted, not on work, you know, middle of a workday at noon. I think it would be more beneficial for working families that wouldn't be able to come out at this time. So, but other than that, no, it was wonderful. Thank you so much. And you can find out more information about my campaign at erinforrobinssdale.com. And remember to vote November 8th.
Thank you. Candidate Robbins.
Most people are aware I'm not from Robinsdale, but I am a Midwesterner. Much of my family lives in Michigan. My wife and I chose to make Robinsdale our home. After living and working abroad as teachers for 11 years, I'm proud to be one of Robinsdale's new homeowners. And I feel a kinship with others who have chosen to make Birdtown their town. We recognize Robinsdale's distinctiveness, its affordability, its diversity. I have voted for Democrats, I have voted for Republicans. Endorsements, again, hurt the objectivity of any elected official. At a minimum, I wish politics did not pervade city council or school board leadership as we are currently seeing, 281, it hurts our ability to get things done. Despite ongoing challenges, Robinsdale endures in its own unique way, and that's why I'd like to take an opportunity to thank a few people who've made it possible. I want to thank the outgoing George Selman for his courage and leadership. I want to thank Marcia Glick, our former city manager, our service organizations like the Lions, the Rotarians, the Community Band, the Whiz Bang Days Committee, the Robinsdale Ambassadors, the Historical Society, the Robinsdale Diggers Club. And I'd like to thank our police officers, our auxiliary police officers, and our firefighters and EMTs for their service. And thank you, of course, to my loving wife, who is also incredibly patient. I love you, thank you to her, thank you all.
Thank you. And finally, candidate Parisian.
Thank you so much for your time and attention this afternoon. Robinsdale Chamber of Commerce, again, League of Women Voters, CCX Media, and our moderator, Peggy, thank you. It's been a pleasure to continue these conversations and opportunities for voters to become more informed. So Ward III particularly had a unique election season so far. We've had the first primary election in, for the city council in decades. Six candidates filed to run in Ward III, and I'm so grateful to Robinsdale voters for the overwhelming support in the election. And I also want to thank the previous candidates, Jen Strater and John Healy, for their kind words and support following the primary election as well. I'm grateful for the support from council member Sheila Webb and our mayor, Bill Blonigan. And thank you to you all for all of the great questions that you've submitted this afternoon. If your question wasn't asked, please do reach out. You can read more about me and my background, voter information, my platform at meaparisian.com. And again, I hope to earn your vote to serve you on our city council. Thank you.
So thank you to the candidates and the audience for your participation in this League of Women Voters. League of Women Voters forum. And let's give them a round of applause. Thank you to our moderator Peggy, I'm not supposed to pronounce that, I'm sorry, and the city of Robinsdale for the use of their space and to CCX Media for broadcasting this candidate forum. Thank you also to the candidates for your participation. The League of Women Voters posts complete, unedited recordings of the forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Excerpts or edited clips of candidate forums may not be used for partisan political purposes. The video of this forum will be posted in a few days on our League of Women Voters CNHEPR website. That stands for League of Women Voters, Crystal, New Hope, East Plymouth, Robinsdale, Facebook page and to vote at vote411.org. If a member of the audience believes the issue has not been adequately addressed, the league urges you to contact that candidate directly. I want to encourage voters and candidates to utilize vote411.org. Voters can find out if they are registered, what will be on their ballot, their polling location and lots more information on voter or vote411.org. Candidates, please fill out the candidate survey if you have not done so. And you can mail that to vote411@legiowomenvotersmn.org and to get your link again. The election is Tuesday, November 8th and the polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Early absentee voting at city hall and county officers has begun and runs through Monday, November 7th. Check your local city hall for exact times. The last day to preregister before general election is Tuesday, October 18th. You can do this by going to vote411 or mnvotes.org or mnsos.org and follow the prompts. It's fast and it's easy. You may also register on the polls in November 8th, an election day, if you are a resident of the state for more than 20 days and before the, 20 days before the election and bring proof of residency. In wrap-up, the League of Women Voters encourages informed active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major political policy issues and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Membership is open to men and women of all ages. For more information about the League of Women Voters, visit our Facebook page at facebook.com and again, this is long, LWVCNHPR or our website. Thank you and have a good evening. Thank you, candidates.